Or to elect a temporary chairman. Do I have any nominations?
Nominate Donnell.
You're the temporary chairman.
Oh, I moved.
You need to actually elect a real chairman.
We have to elect a chairman, you're the temporary one.
Oh, okay. Can we elect a chairman?
I move Donnell be the chair.
Second.
Do I need to do an nomination session?
Can we do that?
No, I'm not part of it.
Because she's not active on our board.
I'm not part of it.
Oh, she doesn't get to vote, does she?
No, she doesn't get to vote.
She cannot be the chair.
She can't be because she doesn't get to vote.
Well, nominate Marvin then.
Second.
Do what? I'm the secretary.
Okay, so somebody?
Jeff just nominated Marvin and I second.
Do we have any other nominations?
The nomination ceased.
Thanks, Scott.
So, all in favor of Marvin Register being?
You've got to take care of the motion to cease nomination.
Oh, okay, I thought we had a second, so.
We did.
Okay, so then is that, is the nomination then, what do we call that? We move to accept a, close it? Close the nomination? And a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, so passed.
Thanks, Donnell.
Alrighty.
Now you actually have to elect Marvin.
Do we have a motion to elect?
We do, it's pending on floor.
Okay, so, can I have a vote? Anybody opposed?
Aye. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You need to pay on more committees, Donnell.
Okay.
Have fun.
You've been here, you've been here long enough to know how this thing's done, Marvin.
Yeah, I know how it works. Thanks, Donnell. I have to present you with the financial report of the county. I got this today. Our fund balance right now is fifty-five million, five hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. And thirty, about thirty million of that is cash money according to what the auditor has told me, so.
I didn't get the end of that, three hundred and forty-three?
Three hundred and forty-three. And out of that, about thirty million of that is cash.
That seems like an awful lot.
I don't think, we haven't voted on that in the past, so I just have to report that. Any, any new business?
I'm moving to adjourn.
Second. We've discussed now. Well, I think we need to accomplish something before we adjourn or at least talk about it.
Any other questions or?
I don't, I don't see there's anything to talk about. I mean, we, we're not, unless we're going to go through and adjust salaries, might as well adjourn, leave them all stay where they are.
So, the question could be if we wanted to adjust salaries. We couldn't have another meeting, right? If you wanted to?
God, we can set another meeting, too.
I don't know if we adjourn, can we? I don't know if we adjourn the salary commission, we can have another meeting off the top of my head, I don't know what the statute reads.
I don't think it hurts, but are we having a discussion on the motion?
Yes.
I would, I'm going to vote against the motion simply because I don't think it hurts to have some discussion about this.
Let's have a discussion about what we're going to have a discussion about. I don't even know what the hell we're talking about.
Well, we have, before we do that, we have.
Actually, a motion to adjourn requires no discussion, it's a preemptive motion, has to be.
We have a motion now to adjourn and we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, or no way do we have to do it by road call. Everything is by road call. Go, Betty.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chris Estes?
No.
Jim LaPage?
No.
Larry Vincent?
No.
Marvin?
No.
Mark absent. Marilyn Spuntzler?
No.
Larry Rodman?
No.
Greg White?
Yes.
Eric Peters?
No.
And Donnell?
She doesn't vote.
So, it passes as a no.
Passes as a no. Motion failed. Anybody have any other motions or anything else I want to bring up or discuss? I'd like to discuss a handout, I think Marvin passed out to everybody. It was a salary study done, I think, in another county for whatever purpose, maybe their salary commission.
This thing?
Yeah, and I think it's just worth noting that for a first-class county, our assessed valuation, for the lowest-paid elected officials of all first-class counties in the state of Missouri, indeed were actually lower paid than a fair number of second, third, and I think even a fourth-class county or two is actually competitive.
Thanks, Marvin.
And I think it's just worth pointing out, and that's why I'm glad that the motion to adjourn without even any discussion of any topics failed because it's, I think it's worth pointing out what we're going to make and that's why I have to say thank you to the chairman.
May I, Marvin? May I?
Yes.
I looked at the same material that Eric just mentioned. I'll note that the commissioners are paid more than all other second, third, and fourth-class counties with, I think, two exceptions, Marion County, Andrean County. No, no, I take that back, Marion County and Mufford County. And that there's no reason that the commissioner's salaries should be increased, in my opinion whatsoever. We make more than the commissioners in one first-class county, and we make less than the other commissioners in other first-class counties. But by the nature of the structure of the county and the job, it's a part-time job, and I think the current pay for commissioners is more than sufficient for that part-time job. And I would not support any, any motion or any effort to change the commissioners' salaries.
Any other discussions?
We come under a new statute that was passed earlier in the year. That is, that statute allowed us, one time, to set our own schedule. All these other salaries that you're talking about are probably set, except Boone County. I probably set according to the salary schedule established by the legislature. I would much prefer to see someone outside the county set the salaries for people inside the county. To do that, you'd have to go by that schedule that's in section fifteen-three-two-three, I believe, there. But that paragraph that gives us, gave us that opportunity, as long as it was suspect at the time, but just whether it was special legislation or not, since everything smelled at the time like it was engineered by Boone Counties to allow them to increase their salaries, which if you look at that schedule, they really took advantage of it. Because Boone County salaries, they probably were twice what they're on in the other county. So, they might have a lawsuit in Osage County. It might be worth whether we are safe in continuing to follow that section, that current section, or whether maybe we should give an opinion as to whether, we're giving opinions from the art, saying, I didn't go in full, but I think it's something like Osage. That county got hit by, and have to pay some backs out. It may be a good time to resolve that issue now as to whether that was special, that was special, that question, I don't know.
Marvin?
Yes.
Pee-wee litigated that. Pee-wee brought a lawsuit over that six, seven years ago. As I recall, it dealt with the special language that dealt with coal and Cape Girardeau County. He brought a lawsuit against the county on that behalf. It went forward, Judge Callahan ruled that that was special legislation, it was invalid. The language that specifically referred to our two counties by population.
Am I okay in talking here? Pee-wee brought a lawsuit in different statute, or whether the legislature passed a law allowing coal county, and he brought the lawsuit down to that. Callahan declared that one. To my knowledge, the, are you saying that the, the people in Cape Girardeau bought a case against, or referencing the section, the paragraph in section fifty-point-three-four-three?
That particular statute that Pee-wee sued on is fifty point, I thought it was three-three-four. It, whatever, it is that same statute. It was amended in whatever year to allow Cape and Boone, or Coal County. It was, you know, it was one of those population things where they drew it real tight and only applied to us in Cape Girardeau County.
But it wasn't the paragraph I'm talking about that.
I think it may have all been in the same, it may have been in the same paragraph, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I'm pretty sure that was addressed whether or not that meeting, whether we could meet, or whether that was special legislation.
Eric? Callaway County acted on that legislation, and as a result, salaries that you see are what they are because they acted on that legislation. They went in there and changed the salaries for a number of different elected officials. Plus, since their pay methodology is attached to assessed valuation, theirs has, like Boone County and many of the others, have continued to gone up. But I'm just saying that you're right about that suit. It had no effect whatsoever on Cape Girardeau County. I don't think it had, would have an effect on what we're trying to talk about right now. I think that was what Pee-wee's lawsuit entailed, it's not what Jim is talking about now, about going addressing the issue by whatever means.
I don't know how we do it, but to make, to be clear of the issue that I'm bringing up, is whether or not we go by the schedule or whether we go by that paragraph that says what we did in ninety-seven, or whatever, whether that might be special legislation. It might get us in an awkward situation down the road.
Anybody else?
Fifty-three-four-three is the one that ties it to the assessed value.
Ties what to assessed value? Everybody's or?
Everybody's.
Okay.
Can I speak? More?
Yes.
I think it's the next paragraph, after the schedule, Larry, is it, is that the paragraph I'm talking about? Says when you're a second-class county and become a first-class county, you can meet one time in October, I think, to set your own schedule. At the time, I, I don't remember, I can't remember the whole last long time, but I can't even remember what happened yesterday. It kind of smelled like special legislation at the time.
Unless it had, I'm sorry, can I?
Go ahead.
I mean, unless, unless that legislation ties it to a specific county. There's a number of cases out there that say, you know, using classification as a method for laws is fine, because we have lots of laws. All of our duties are different because we're first-class counties from third-class counties. Well, by and large, they're all different. So, if all that, if all that language is, says, if you're a second-class county and you become a first-class county, you're allowed to set the schedule, that's not special legislation. The one that was special was when it says, you know, a county of no, no less than seventy-three thousand, two hundred, and no more than seventy-three thousand, three hundred in population in the last census, which is, I think, what they, some wickets like that is what they picked from Cape Girardeau one.
That was, that was fifty-three-thirty-nine.
Where you had to be just.
Well, let me just say regardless of how that particular bill that you have was worded, and what, you know, what the impact or consequences of Judge Callahan's ruling, the fact is, and I think everybody's agreeing, room would agree, if the salary commission decided to approach the legislature to write a bill that would allow our county or any other county in our situation to revisit the methodology that they use, that's an option for all of us. I think what, I haven't talked to Jim about this, but I assume that that's what you're getting at, is?
Well, I don't mind that, but what I'm getting at is if Mark is satisfied that the county faces no risk of having to pay back salaries, then I'm saying I'm not that comfortable yet. And I would just, I want to go on record saying that I think it is an issue that might be worth looking at, and just be on the safe side. If we have to get an agey opinion or even an opinion, an opinion from Richardson, that we're okay, then I don't see, I think it would seem to be a very inexpensive, painless thing to do. And we would have an opinion saying that we are safe. If we, I would still favor somehow taking the decision out of our hands and putting it back in the legislature, which the schedule would do. I think it's kind of ridiculous, since if you read that newspaper already going on, it discussed more of the situation in Osage County than it did the suit. But the prosecutor attorney or whatever said it, it seemed ridiculous to have a salary commission that when you have the legislature setting itself. I think it's ridiculous to have a salary commission here, somebody outside the county also set our salary. Otherwise, what Boone County did can be done very easily. My counterpart up there makes about sixty percent of what I did.
Very.
About the same work. There's, there's parts where everybody said that I agree with, and I think, I think where we need to go honestly is going with the legislative fix. The current system is not a functional system. Well, it functions, it just doesn't function well. And I, and I think that's where we need to spend our effort of time right now.
If we go with the legislative fix, again, I think all of us agree that it should not have Coal County end up where Boone County and Cape Girardeau County and several other first-class counties where the salaries are exorbitant. So, if we discuss what we should do about investigating further, I think hopefully that would find its way into.
Well, I think there's two, there's two sides to it. I think, one, we need to look at, at setting, setting the structure of how it works. And I, and I think the other side of it is we need to look at, at ways that counties have been, what's a good term to use? We've, we've been victimized by revenue that should be coming to us going to the state, or should remain here going to the state. And I think there's ways, and there are some reps that I've talked to that are interested in looking at that. And I think that, because realistically, there's still a limited budget no matter what we do. And, and if I compare my salary to somebody who works for me, I've got to say I'm not comparing my people's salary. But I think there's ways if we can do this and potentially make a budget neutral. And affect us, but also maybe affect our people as well.
Any other?
It makes a concerted effort on our part. People will. I guess what, if I had.
Go ahead.
If I had to make a motion, I'd say, I would somehow study our options, assuming we can meet again. If we study our, the county's options, provided this discussion, I guess. And then we'd have to do that in a few days, because I think, I think we can meet, I'm not sure what, I think we can meet again, but I'm not sure.
We can meet, we, I read it too, and I can't remember what it was, but I think we can meet all the way up to the end of November and then even up into December. But I'd have to get, go back and look at that statute, but we can meet again.
So, so if we had a, if we had a motion to recess allowing a committee appointed by the chair to investigate the issue that Jim was discussing, and set that, set that thing, that would seem to be in order, if what y'all says is correct.
Right, we can do that.
The statute says, for the year nineteen-eighty-nine, every second year thereafter, the salary commission shall meet in every county as many times as it needs necessary on or prior to November thirtieth of any such year for the purpose of determining how compensation is paid to county officials.
What are we trying to fix here? What are we doing? What are we doing? What are we talking about? Fixing all the salaries? Are we talking about individual ones? I'm going to tell you right now, if it's going to affect the commissioners' pay, I'll vote against it, no matter what. Just, that's where I'm at. I knew what I made when I got elected, that's where I'm at. I knew what it was whenever I ran. If it's somebody else that's not paid right or something, and we want to look at adjusting it, I'm, I'm fine with that, but we need to find a way to do it. I don't know if that's going to affect my salary, I'm not for it. And I think Mark said that.
Do you understand what happened in Osage County?
Somewhat. They got back pay and everything.
Well, as I understand it, in Osage County, the commissioner, they, they were not going by the schedule in Osage County, they were under the schedule. Commissioner filed suit that he shouldn't have been paid according to the schedule. And the court ruled that elected officials should be paid, at least in that county, should be paid according to the schedule. The county was on the hook for, I don't know how many thousands of dollars in back pay that these elected officials were entitled. Is that clear now? Is that your understanding of?
Yeah, I don't agree with it. He knew what he was going to get paid when he ran for it.
Before you agree with this, you're questioning facts, Jeff.
All right, I'm not going to argue with you on it, Jim.
Go ahead.
Now, my question is, my concern is, I don't want us to face that same situation down the road where somebody sues and we decide that we should have been paid a higher salary for years, and we, the county gets hit with a big claim for back salaries, which, which is mandated by the court. That's my concern. I'm not, I don't, I doubt if we, I share Mark's opinion. I doubt if we would face anything like that, but I think what I'm saying is that it might be wise to do a lump checking to make sure we don't face that sort of situation.
Why not just ask for a prosecutor's opinion? Why not just ask for an opinion from the prosecuting attorney? We have the authority to do that.
Have to give us a.
And, and it, and, you know, do you need a motion to that effect, Marvin?
We'll need a motion to.
I, I move that we seek an opinion from the prosecuting attorney as to the effect of the Osage County litigation upon our salary schedule. And if such opinion, and we request such opinion no later than the twentieth of November.
And what is the twentieth of November?
It's a Wednesday.
What was the question on what time?
The effect of the Osage County litigation on our salary schedule.
Yeah, okay. You have a second?
We have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Any discussion?
So, we're having our prosecutor give us an opinion?
Yeah.
Or we're having somebody else's?
I think we can only ask our prosecutor to.
Well, I guess the only question, who's going to ask the prosecutor, the chairman?
On behalf of the salary commission.
Do what? I didn't hear.
On behalf of the salary commission.
The prosecuting attorney. I would like, I would like to add to that motion that we have a committee to also check into the questions that Jim's got, to find out if there's more, more to it than I just discuss them with the prosecutor. That's my opinion. I think, I think there should be just somebody else to look into it, too, but.
I mean, it's a legal question. It's not a fact question at all, it's a legal question. Does the case have impact on us or not? I mean, that's, we should go to our, our legal representatives, prosecutor.
I think your motion covers that. I think it doesn't cover Eric's concern, which Marvin's left. So, would we, can we just go ahead and vote on this motion and then make another motion secondary to that ruling, while?
That's what needs to be done.
Okay. We have a motion right now to ask the, to ask the prosecuting attorney his opinion as to what Osage County's question is, or how that was based on?
The lawsuit.
The lawsuit that they had.
Mark Ellinger?
Yes.
Jeff Helscher?
Yes.
Chris Shipley?
Yes.
Chris Estes?
Yes.
Jim LaPage?
Jim?
Yes.
Larry Vincent?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Oh, Jeff.
Marilyn Spuntzler?
It's happening to me, too.
Yes. Larry Rodman?
Yes.
Greg White?
Yes.
Eric Peters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then yours to have a committee?
Yeah, I, I make the motion that we establish a committee.
Can you make a motion?
Huh?
The chair, can you make a motion?
I don't know, can I?
Maybe Eric should make a motion.
Eric should make it. Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you know, what the point of the committee would be, and I'm not sure how many people on here would even want it, so can we discuss that just momentarily? But, I mean, you're talking about equalizing salaries among all elected officials, or having different tiers for the commissioners versus the rest of us, or. I just, before we vote on whether to establish a committee to explore something, what are we looking for?
Well, I think from your conversation, it appeared to me that regardless of what Mark's answer is, or, or, should we say, Mark said Osage County's lawsuit has no effect on Coal County, do we still want to look at going to the salaries based on the assessed value?
Oh, okay, okay, got you.
I think that was, was how I kind of understood what we were talking about.
Well.
But I didn't bring it up, so I don't need to speak, or whoever did.
Well, I mean, if that's, if, if we can agree the majority of us, that that would be the purpose of the meeting, to explore a new methodology on which salaries can be based, and how we would affect that change, you know, probably, as Jim mentioned, through legislation, then I would be happy to make a motion to establish such a committee. I'll make that motion. We have a second?
I don't know why we would create a committee to look at legislation. I mean, if there are individuals in this room that want to pass legislation, I mean, they're certainly free to contact the legislature. There may be people in this room that would oppose that kind of legislation, depending on what's said. Which, you know, would break the salary commission, we, you know, you could end up with, I don't know what the benefit is to having a committee look at legislation. Now, if you want to look at, if you want to come up with a proposal for what we would set our salaries at for the next cycle, you know, you can come up with a proposal to set the salaries, but everybody here gets the opportunity to create that at any time they want to.
The benefit would be that if a majority on the salary commission voted to approach their legislative delegation, it would have the, the approval of a majority of the committee.
But all you have to do is sign off on it. I mean, it doesn't require the committee to vote. If you, for example, if you came up with legislation, and you could get Chris and Larry and Marvin to sign off on it, that's no different than having Chris and Larry and Marvin vote for it in the commission.
I agree, but I'm looking at it from the perspective of you're an elected official of the General Assembly. The, the source of your request, where does it come? If it comes from a stray member or two from the salary commission, that's different than if the, the salary commission voted to proceed with requesting.
And if the salary commission votes, what do we have, eleven members?
Yeah.
If we vote six to five, I mean, that, that's not exactly a ringing endorsement of taking it forward.
It's like the beginning of the meeting where, you know, you wanted to make a motion to not even have any discussion.
I know.
Now we're having a, a discussion vote. Go ahead. Larry?
I agree with Mark. I think if you want to have a salary, a separate committee, we just need to look at, that committee just needs to look at what they want to propose to the salary commission, this body, before December first, on how to move forward with salaries for elected officials. I, I don't see any point going to the legislature. I think it's highly unlikely that even if all eleven of us agreed on something, that the legislature. even if all eleven of us agreed on something, that the legislature would do anything with.
Well, with this comment, then your stuff, there's only one way you can increase salaries for the next term, and that's by some percentage.
Proportionally for every.
That's all, one way you can do it.
We have no option to go to the assessment.
No.
And that's because of what happened in nineteen ninety-seven or whatever?
Yeah, it's the one time.
If I understand Eric's motion, what that happens is that committee looks at it, it comes back to us, and, and I think the appropriate thing is within the month. And we still make the decision on, 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 in total or in part, what we move forward with.
And maybe nothing, it's just, I mean, all we're doing is exploring options and talking to one another instead of trying to kill debate, have no discussion whatsoever. Well, neither way, you went through a few minutes versus some people, I should take a couple of them. And in the end, Mark, I think you vote up or down, it is what it is, but let's, let's not kill stuff.
But as a matter of law, the only issue that's before us is, do we set the sal, do we adjust the salaries or not? And unless we get an opinion, or unless somebody here brings a lawsuit that throws out the salary statute in some manner, we're stuck with equal percentage increase, or decrease, you can do it either way, and then, then there's no other option. So, you know, if you come for, I'll be honest, and I've said this every year I've been here, the Tre, I, I don't think it's fair that the treasurer gets paid less than the other elected officials. I don't think that's a fair situation. If there was a way to remedy that, I'd be all for it. There are elected officials that serve in a, what I would really call a full-time capacity, and I think, you know, that there's meritorious cases to be made for their salaries to be addressed, to be adjusted. Unfortunately, the legislative construct that's been created that we operate under, unless there's a court that throws it out, doesn't give us that flexibility. We have, we have one option, well, we have two: raise salaries or decrease salaries by an equal percent. And we can debate how legislation ought to look like, we can debate what we think would be a fair way to compensate individual office holders, but in the end, the law is law, and we're stuck by it. And I can't speak for anybody else, but I'm not gonna vote to raise the commissioner's salaries under any circumstance, under any percentage.
Mark, I think that's the problem we face, and we make our own decisions. We're open to any decrease in salary, and that's fine. Boone County wasn't able to, to talk in fact, so it's a big draw. Future years, when you're not around, that's. And if you do have a salary structure to set, like people outside, uh, I think you avoid that situation.
But, but what's to stop the legislature, or what's to stop Boone County from going to the legislature and saying, first-class county commissioners ought to get paid six-hundred-thousand dollars a year, and if they get it through the legislature, I guess we all get paid it? The best solution, the best solution is the solution we have, which is, we all sit around and we vote. And we can vote to raise salaries, we can vote to lower salaries, if we do nothing, they stay the same. That's the best solution, let's just resolve it. I have no objection to waiting to see what the prosecutor's opinion is with respect to the Osage County leg, legislation, because if it turns out that that litigation means we can't, we have to go to the salary schedule, that's great.
Distorting what's, I think, is being discussed here.
Our motion's on the floor is to put a committee together to look at legislative, potential legislative fix.
I'm withdrawing my motion. You're withdrawing your motion?
I'm withdrawing my motion.
Did everybody hear that?
Eric has withdrawn his emotion. His motion. His motion.
There's no motion on the floor now.
Okay. I'm gonna speak for just a minute, I'll try to keep it short. I have to agree with Mark right now. What the law says is, we have to come together and make the decision right now whether or not we get a raise. Now, we don't necessarily like that situation, but that's what the law says, and tell the law, and somebody can interpret the law to say different. The discussion about whether we're gonna do it based on the assessed value, or whether we're gonna do it however, this is the same discussion we've had every year we've been in here. Mark Richardson gave us an opinion, I don't know if it was last time or the time before that, I don't remember what the results were, I don't know what the date of the Osage County case was, I don't know what the situation is there. With that being said, I'm gonna make a motion that this Salary Committee, this year, raise elected officials in the county of Cole. Period.
Second.
You got a second?
Can we pick that motion? By what? I think you gotta put a number to that.
I said, I make a motion that this committee, this year, raise the salaries of elected officials in Cole County. Period.
But you gotta have a percentage or something, I mean.
No, I don't. You can decide on that later. If you decide to raise it one dollar, you can raise it one dollar. If you wanna raise it ten thousand dollars, you can raise it ten thousand dollars. All it does is push the issue out there of whether or not we're gonna make a decision on this, on whether or not there's gonna be a salary increase this year.
But you'll get no second until you mention that.
Right, well, we, do we really have a motion on the floor, so we really can't discuss?
I'm withdrawing.
It's like a test, Chris, it's kinda like a test.
No.
We don't have.
So no second on that?
No, sir, we don't have a second on Chris's yet.
Doesn't sound like you're gonna get one, so I'm gonna just let you go.
Larry?
Marvin, what we really decided, because the salary of the ones that were elected in two thousand fourteen, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, anyone in office will not get an increase in salary until, until their term is up, and the new, new term starts, if you're re-elected, you get your, you get the increase. If you're not running, or you're defeated, you do not get it. So, it's, this, if you're gonna, if we're going to do it, this would actually be the best time to do it, because you have more people being elected this time than you will in the next election. This time, you've got my position, you've got the presiding commissioner, you've got the collector, you've got the auditor, and, uh, are you up to, Eric? No.
Recorder, prosecutor.
And prosecutor. So there's about, there's about five, five positions right now that this could affect in this next election. Yes?
I just make a motion that, uh, the existing salary of the, um, people running for office in two thousand fourteen, that their salary be increased, whatever amount the employees of the county get on COLA for the next four years after two thousand fourteen.
How would you do that?
I'll second.
How would you do that?
Who's second is?
You've done that in the past.
Any discussion, yes?
Like, if officials.
That's how come salaries were their numbers.
A motion to table until we have the results of the decision.
Larry?
I'd like to comment.
Yes, Mr. Larry?
I was just gonna tell you, I've got Mark's legal memorandum from, uh, two thousand and seven, when we put this question to him last time. And in it, he says his Cal, Salary Commission has a number of options for setting future salaries under the theory law, fifteen point three four three one, provides that the recorder, deeds, clerk, auditor, presiding commissioner, collector, treasurer, assessor, private, executive administrator, may be paid according to the following statutory schedule. And then he gives the assessed valuation schedules, and says the Salary Commission may elect to take one hundred percent of above salary, or a higher or lower percentage. And he lists what Cole County's current assessed value.
He wrote another opinion the next.
After that?
He wrote another opinion after that, where he changed his mind, and said, we're locked into what we're doing.
I think, cause we got, I think, as I recall, cause we got that opinion, and we said, well, what about this other provision that we operate under?
I don't think we can do what there is, uh, proposing here, because it doesn't set us a definite percent increase, and it's not in the statute. We're gonna have to raise it by eight percent, in the same percentage as everyone, and that, that's an indefinite percent, we don't know what the COLA percent will be in future years or anything. Besides, we have to do two things. We have to vote on whether to increase the base salary and, and COLA, two different things.
I think, I think there's a case on the COLA, cause I got that Salary Commission one oh one thing, and it says, cites this Carroll County case, saying the Salary Commission may authorize annual cost of living adjustments to all offices effective at the next term of office. At the discretion of the county commission, provided that any such adjustments shall be in the same percentage and shall not exceed the cost of living adjustments given to other county employees. Cost of living adjustments run with the office and are applicable to new office holders. Right, but I, as I understand Larry's motion, it's a COLA motion.
That's the second thing. We have, we're still, are we finished with talking about increasing the base salary?
I think you have a motion on the floor to deal with COLA.
My comment on that is, Larry said it applies only to those being elected in the next election. I mean, that's not statutory, and it doesn't have to be people across the board, to everybody. You can't do it for just this elected official, or that elected official, it has to apply to everybody. And I think that's the only fair way, because otherwise you end up with somebody in a situation where they're an elected official, but they might be making quite a bit less than other people sitting in this room. Now granted, duties are different, but the level of responsibility is the same.
I, I agree with Chris, I believe that the way the statute on the COLA works is, it's just a motion to apply the COLA increases to all, all officers. I don't think it's to just the ones elected the next term. The COLA kinda is every. And I think we may already have, I, I mean, it, that may already be what we have. So, you know, I think Chris was right on that. I don't, I don't think you can set it just for one group of officers.
Do we, do we need to have a motion again, cause we did the last time, that all elected officials will get a COLA, if there's a COLA to the employees, the COLA will be given?
Well, right now Larry's got a motion on the floor.
Well, Larry, he's got his motion. Larry withdraws his motion. My question is, we voted last time that all elected officials would get the COLA, whatever the employees got.
I believe that is what we have to do.
Do we have to vote on that each?
If you wanna get the COLA, I think that is what's required.
We have to vote on it again? Okay, mine was a motion then.
Hey, wait, please.
Okay. My motion is that all elected officials will get.
Actually, I think Greg made the motion. You can make a motion, your chair.
He made the motion, I can second it though, I think.
Okay, two?
Two, in, that everyone, that all elected employees, all elected officials will get the same COLA as elected employees, as the employees. And we got a second by Larry. Any discussion? All, Betty?
Okay. Mark?
No.
No. Jeff?
No.
Chris?
No.
Chris Estes?
Yes.
Jim LaPage?
Yes.
Larry Vincent?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Larry Rodman?
Yes.
Greg White?
Yes.
Eric Peters?
Is it the COLA?
Yes.
Eight to three, yes.
Motion carries. Any other, yes?
I move that we recess until we get Mark's.
We have a motion to recess until January the twentieth, that, uh. November the twentieth, sorry about that. November the twentieth, what time?
That's a Wednesday.
Ten o'clock?
Uh, we got a commission meeting that day.
Eleven o'clock again?
Uh, we got Campbell meeting at noon.
Yeah, why don't we do it at nine AM the twenty-first?
Nine AM the twenty-first.
Thursday morning. Just get it done and out of the way.
We got budget meeting that morning.
I don't have anything on my calendar.
Eight, uh, ten.
I won't be here the twenty-first.
I don't have that.
Twenty-first doesn't work for me.
No, it's all day, isn't it? Yeah, it's all day.
How about the afternoon of the twentieth?
Afternoon of the twentieth, two o'clock or one o'clock?
I've got a two o'clock.
Yeah, one thirty or two.
I can't do it, I can't do it at two, I got sleep with it too.
November at two o'clock.
I cannot do it at two o'clock.
Oh, you can't do it? What time? One?
At nine AM. I don't see why we don't just do it at ten AM.
Ten AM on November the twentieth?
Yeah, we've got an agenda set, it's a real light one right now, we just keep it small. Yes.
November the twentieth?
Ten AM.
Ten AM.
Good? Good?
Okay. That should work.
I will offer that as an amendment to Greg's motion.
Oh, that goes back.
That's yours every time you talk, Jim.
I second the motion then to Greg's.
To Greg's, uh, on November the twentieth at ten AM. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Yes. I have to get with the prosecutor to. Would you dare give it?
Presumably.
Don't we even make a motion to?
If you buy the twentieth, he has to have it to us.
He made a motion to adjourn, Greg did.
No, I didn't say any business. I said by the twentieth, which means he has to have it to us by twelve oh one AM on the twentieth. So Marvin, when you asked Mark to give the opinion, because the way we said the motion, we need to have it before, I want, by twelve oh one AM on the twentieth.
On what?
On the twen, Mark, we need Mark's opinion, or his declination of opinion, by twelve oh one AM on the twentieth.
Not by the end of the day?
Not by the end of the day, cause I didn't move for the end of the day, I said by the twentieth, which is at twelve oh one AM, so.
Were they all giddy and stuff up there at CBD then?
Oh, it was packed in there.
So, we're gonna spend. We're not spending nothing. No, they're gonna spend up to two million dollars or ask me to.
They're redoing their roof, well, here, here's, here's the deal. They're, they're gonna remediate the mold and clean everything up, then they're, actually, they talked about doing some structural stuff.
It was done by Callaway County. Mm-hmm. Suit, or when was it? If you'll get the, uh, demo, uh, terr. Unterrified Democrat, uh. Last week's, I think it will, might be this week yet. It's either this week or last week. Okay, it's last week's, there's a big article in it.
I think there was another one down in Marvin or Miller County, wherever Luanne, what was Chuck? Chuck that used to work for the governor. His wife is the, I think it's, I think it's, he holds office down there, and she gotta worry ninety-seven thousand dollars in back pay.
Is she the one that filed and won the lawsuit?
Yeah.
That's, that was in Marvin County.
Marvin County.
Yeah.
Because she was the treasurer, I think. Yeah, she was the treasurer, and her salary, I think, if people went to the counties, I think she went, I think basically all are the same, sue, she could pay less money than what everybody else was paying. She sued to get back to the base of what everybody else was, and she won, and like I said, she got ninety-one thousand dollars back.